Build an inclusive equitable community, ensure a vibrant and healthy community for the Prairie View residents. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prairie View. Uh, commit itself to systematically deliberating, uh, apply deliberately applying a racial social equivalence in its decision making. Henceforth is the resolution.
Councilman Randle?
I move to reapprove the Equity and Social Equity Resolution Number R two zero two zero dash zero two one zero dash zero zero two.
Thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded that council approved the racial and social equity resolution. Number R two zero two zero dash zero two one zero dash zero zero two. You've heard the motion, ready for the question, question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item seventeen. Discuss and take action on resolution of City Council of City of Prairie View Texas designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the community development block, block, community development block grant for C D B G program. Uh, council has the documents, we've got the, uh, recommendation of, uh, former city attorney Line Decker who from inception has been on this project. And the bidding and what have you is handled right in this room. And you've got his letter and I'll read it into the record February fifth, two thousand twenty, addressed to myself. Regarding water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway, City of Prairie View Texas. Uh, dear Mayor Allen, the City of Prairie View received eight bids for the water sanitary sewer extension.
But your honor.
James Muse Parkway.
That's not this item.
This is supposed to be.
This is just the signatory resolution.
Oh, just the signatory?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the council's plan?
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Randle?
I move to reapprove the resolution of. Designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to, uh. Pertaining to the community development block grant. Then I, I believe the mayor potentially also be the best signature here.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the community development block grant signatories be approved adding the mayor pro temp. You've heard the motion, ready for the discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, and now we're on the joint election agreement, council?
Sure, I want to make sure everybody has the whole document, it's, it's the joint election agreement plus this attachment. So the joint election agreement is pretty standard, I think what your questions had to do with, and this is what you've done in the past with the same person, is your questions had to do with the, um. Later polling locations, which as you can see, and as I told you, Ms. Eason says, she doesn't determine that until she knows how many entities she's actually contracting with, and that's not until the end of the filing date period. Uh, so the, the top of it is the early election portion. And she has a note here that says all locations will be open the same hours as listed. She's got days and hours listed, so if there's any change that you want to make to them, then that's what we would propose back to her as your approved option. And if she comes back and says, I can't do that, this is too much, whatever, then we'll have to come back and adjust it or do it ourselves. So whatever is your pleasure regarding the, you know, obviously we're going to have this in accordance with the earlier agreement, so we'll remove the Prairie View City Hall. And if you want to look at different dates and times, we're, if we just have the Memorial Student Center, that it's up to you if you want to have it the whole period.
My question is, uh.
So, so right now with the dates, April twentieth, with the twenty eighth, it's, uh, we have, the dates are already listed for the joint election. Uh, we would only be talking about the Memorial Student Center, which we added, we would need to come up with those dates. So we have the option to do the three days like we've had before, or we can do all, the all seven days?
Uh, I got approval from, uh, Mr. Samson said earlier, three days, Monday, uh, till Wednesday, eight to five, the M S C game.
Yeah, it's the first week, Monday, Tuesday. So that's the twenty second.
So Monday the twentieth, eight to five, Tuesday the twenty first, eight to five, and Wednesday the twenty second, eight to five?
So if we're going to do the three days, why wouldn't we? We, you can do the all weekend, we can.
Because we would have to do it based off of.
The availability of bill, no problem. So.
The other days would be at the Walla County Community Center.
So we would just, we would just be paying for three additional days at the M S C.
Right, because Walla County Community Center is in that first four.
Yeah, the other four are for all of the dates already, that's not a decision, so when you have the Memorial Student Center for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eight to five. I mean, you, that's absolutely what you can do, and if for some reason she says I can't do it partial time, which I don't know why she would say, but she might, I mean, it's her election, then, as I said, this didn't have to be done. We want it done now, but it, obviously the polling locations are to be agreed upon later anyway, so.
So just, so I can, so I can be certain about how this works. So for seven days, they'll be voting at the four locations. And three of those seven days, we'll be paying for an additional location, so we'll have two locations towards the first seven days, and then one location for seven days.
No, sir, you'll have five locations at that point.
Well, I'm talking about within the city.
Right.
I get the five locations.
Okay, so.
I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about the cities, but the, the locations within the city, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I was just speaking towards within the city, so they will have two locations within the city.
Yes, so for your purposes, there will be one location in the city all days, and you're adding another one for three days.
For three days, that's.
My question is, why do we, and, and maybe, it's just a silly question. By us going with the elections office, why are we paying for these other loc, why are we paying for these other locations? Instead of just saying, we want the community center for, and the M S C?
They're not offering that option.
But, but.
If you want to get into the business of Prairie View running its own elections, you absolutely can do that.
I'm just asking, was that an option that we even, so, so I get that?
It is not an option.
So in order for the county to run our election, we have to enter into this agreement?
Yes.
Which is a county-wide agreement?
Yes, which includes those.
Which gives the cost throughout the entire county.
And a big part of that is because, uh, with Ms. Bynum being relatively new, uh, we're doing the same thing we did twelve months ago, contracted with the county to handle it. Um, actually, the last prior two elections, we've done the same thing.
Right, I, I, I get that, and I, I, but we also dictated to them where we wanted them to be since it was our election. And I was just, is this the impact of House Bill eighteen eighty-eight? With their having those locations and us, for us joining in the agreement, that's why these locations are listed?
You gave them these locations.
The four, no, 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 I'm talking about the four that's.
No, no, the, the other four.
I imagine the other places in the county submitted their locations as well.
No, they have not, they have not yet, this is not eighteen eighty-eight, it's actually a different bill, which I can't tell you the number of. Um, but yes, you can now vote at all locations.
And so where, by, and by adopting a joint election, that gives us the option to do those four? But we don't, we didn't give them an option to say, well, we only want these two?
No, that's, no.
It's not really.
No, that's not an option this year.
Yeah, council votes.
Alright, so I move that we have, since the Walla County Community Center is already all mag of seven days, I move that we put the Memorial Student Center as a early voting poll from April twentieth to April twenty-second, eight AM to five PM.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that the Memorial Student Center, uh, location be added from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, April twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, from eight AM to five PM. To the other four, Walla County Annex, Walla ISD Admin, the Walla County Community Center, and Brookshire Convention Center. Heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, so that was, could we have a motion for the whole agreement to be approved as well?
Mister Mayor.
And the, the only caveat I would have is if you need the polling locations, you come back to city council versus, uh, just being agreed to by Ms. Bynum and or the mayor, um, then you would probably need to state that in your motion.
We probably would have a polling location if there's a dispute? What do you mean, if she says she can't do?
So, so, so we have to be agreed upon later, that means between them and the city, so, so.
So if it needs, if it needs to be.
So we would like for it to come back to us so that we have.
It's just been a fairly controversial topic, I'm presuming city council wants to hear it, but I don't know that.
So what you're saying is if they change this contract to something else from a location standpoint?
No, she says she can't.
Polling locations are not on here.
It says election day.
To be agreed upon at a later day.
So it's saying that we would like for it to come back to city council for us to agree upon what we would like to have, uh, our election day, so.
So for example, if you add in city hall on election day, if you, you know, that sort of thing, so for actual election day, those are to be determined.
Early voting, now, so is that a separate contract, or could we just?
It is in this contract, but to be determined at a later time, so what I'm saying to you is if you want city council approval of that, state that in your motion now.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Randle?
I move that we approve. The joint, the joint election agreement with Walla County Elections, uh, administrative for May second, twenty twenty regular and special election with the election day location of, to come back to city council, um, for discussion.
Second.
As been properly moved and seconded that the joint election agreement between the City of Prairie View and Walla County Elections for the May second, two thousand twenty joint, uh, early voting locations be brought back to city council. Once confirmed what they are. All those in favor? Councilman Randle?
You've looked over this?
Yes, yes, yes.
More questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item nineteen, discuss, consider and take action on a water bid for water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway. Under the one point four million dollar USDA Economic Development Administration Grant, zero eight dash zero one dash zero five zero eight two, job number nineteen dash five zero one. Uh, council has the packet of information from, uh, former city engineer Line Decker, uh, recommending, and I'll bring this into the record. Uh, the City of Prairie View received eight bids for the water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway Project. The low bid was submitted by Five T Utilities Inc. in the amount of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents. A copy of the completed bid tabulation is included with this letter. I recommend that the water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway Project be awarded to the low bidder, Five T Utilities Inc. in the amount of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and twelve cents. Listed below are related costs associated with the project, uh, you got the contract bid amount, the contingencies at ten percent engineering at eight and a half percent, inspection at two percent. Total project cost, one million sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. If you need additional information, or if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, very truly yours, David Line Decker, professional engineer, former city engineer.
Attorney Griffin, have you had a chance to look at this?
Yes, and, uh, in addition to your approval, uh, E D A also has your approval.
And they have, yes, council will have our, I know, uh, uh, Mr. Line Decker was kind of lead on this project. Has Trilogy, our current engineer, looked at, had a say, I mean, not, not, so I know we're using Line Decker, but he's not our current city engineer, have Trilogy? No.
Not to my knowledge, I don't believe so.
I, I've discussed this with Trilogy, and the engineering costs associated with it have pretty much all been borne out from an expense standpoint on the grant. Um, otherwise, yes, we were definitely taking a look at addressing that, and, uh, including having them check what have you.
Mister Mayor? On, on this project, uh, this is the same project, I think I sent you an email, uh, no, this is a project that we started over five plus years ago. And I asked for us to have a in-depth presentation, uh, on this project, because there was only, I guess, two councils, one per, one council person and the mayor, who, well, no, two council members.
Mayor wasn't here then.
Yeah, that's correct, two council people who were a part of this five years ago. And so, um, I have two questions, one, is there a timeline on this approval for this, uh, agenda item number nineteen? And number two, um, when can the all of city council be updated on kind of where the project is? I think that was part of the conversation we had when Nick Houston came, but he didn't have anything to present to us, kind of on, from where we started five years ago, to where we're kind of we at? To kind of update is more than just us pushing through numbers, what is the complexity of this total thing that will up, update the infrastructure for the City of Prairie View?
Well, the, uh, from a timeline standpoint, you are exactly right there, as you said, it was initially awarded in two thousand fifteen. And in two thousand, latter two thousand sixteen, early two thousand seventeen, it was totally canceled. But they, uh, we were able to go back in, meeting with E D A, USDA, and Austin, and get them to basically reactivate it with, uh, with changing the, uh, recipient. To H T Jones versus the other one who was not eligible that was in the grant. But because of that, and that was done really to keep them from putting it back out there, because if it went back to Washington DC, I don't think we would have got this money back. Um, and we didn't want to take that chance, so we kept it with the decision in Austin, and that worked out well. But they also held us to that same two thousand fifteen origination award, and we have a matter of months to get this done, or we lose all the money.
September twenty twenty, the prop, the, the engineer says it'll, it'll take two and a half months to get this done. The question I have, because we have most majority of council, and the mayor was not from the beginning of the project. When can we get an update on this project, and when is the, the timeline, if we move this to the next meeting, or move this to having a special meeting? When can we get a, 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 a presentation update on this project? So we're, we're not just moving, approving numbers, we're actually can tie in its complexity of everything that's happening on that particular, uh, project in the city.
The, the biggest thing in the past with Mister Line Decker is his being tied up, I can check with him, see if he's available for the next meeting. But because of his other commitments with other city councils and that sort of thing, that's a big part of why, uh, why he resigned from us, but I can check and see if, if he's, if he, if he's available. Public management's not a problem, we can get public management, but the engineer is the one with the complexity, public management did, um, helped us with the paperwork, and Nick Houston wasn't even here. Uh, it was his predecessor that helped us get it through and that sort of thing, but we can easily have him come at the next meeting, but. Yes, sir, council roll in.
Can we move, uh, agenda item nineteen to our next city council meeting, would that put us behind in, in timing? And we can have the presentation by Nick Houston or whoever, um, so council will kind of know everything that's going on, because again, uh, this is something that started five years ago, but this is also instrumental. And with a lot of citizens, we talked about earlier in reference to infrastructure updates, and right now, we currently can't communicate to them what is going on, other than we're going to spend nine hundred thousand dollars. And so I'm assuming by, that'll give us two weeks to be able to have, uh, the, yourself and administration, Mister Houston, put together a presentation, so we can talk about. What is going to actually be done with the awarding of this contract, but also what is it going to do to that area of town in reference to infrastructure? So I move that this be, uh, brought to our next city, uh, council agenda, along with a presentation from Nick Houston from public management.
If I could recommend a caveat to that? That if, uh, Mister Houston tells us it needs to be done, should we call a special meeting in the interim, instead of waiting the two weeks? Just in case it causes a problem with the grant? No, you can't, you cannot do that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, with that caveat.
Only the attorney, honestly, only the attorney.
With the caveat of if it needs to be done, that we call a special meeting, that's my motion, so.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that with the caveat that if need be a special meeting be called, that the. Action on award of the bid for the water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway, under the one point four million dollar USDA Economic Development Administration Grant, zero eight dash zero one dash zero five zero eight two, job number nineteen dash five zero one. Heard the motion, ready for the discussion?
It, it is not nineteen, with the presentation from public management, Nick Houston.
Okay, with, with the presentation from Nick Houston at the next meeting? Unless it's going to be issued and then a special meeting be called? Councilman Randle?
I guess my, I, I don't know, I don't see why we couldn't move forward with the, with the passing of the, the bid and still have the presentation in two weeks, because I don't, I don't think anything that's going to be communicated in the presentation is going to, uh, cause us to disapprove the bid, and I feel like. This project's been prolonged for so long, and we, I, I understand, I understand council needing to be called, but I, I feel like we can't keep hand at the same time, but right now, we just extended, extended, and I feel like we can, we can multitask, we can do multiple things at one time.
My underwriting is that I tried to do that, I tried to have Mister Houston here, uh, the mayor sent me an email and told me it was none of my business to contact people, and that's why I, I simply, uh, I, I can read the email.
I, I get that part, but I, I, I don't think that, I mean, regardless as far as us moving the project forward, I think we're, we're, we're holding back on moving the project forward. When we could, we could move the project forward and get the communication and renew the next meeting, instead of, instead of holding on, the possibility he may not be able to show up, you don't have to try to call a, a registry meeting, and then, who knows, people's availability looks like.
We tried that, again, this, I've, I've had it on the last agenda, Mister Houston, um, and, and I've tried to talk to the mayor about this issue several, several times, and so it'd be different if it was the first time, uh, council made, but I, I simply asked, uh, sent an email to Mister Houston, Mister Line Decker, Mister Attorney, everybody. Asking for an update, so I can help pull this together, and, and, and the response, um, from the mayor was, was unpleasant. And so again, I, I, I asked that, we just called, I called for the question, um, that we, I just called for the question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right?
Oppose.
Uh, is there another motion on this matter, this council's question?
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve awarding the bid for water sanitary sewer extension along James Muse Parkway, under the one point four million dollar USDA grant, uh, Economic Development Administration Grant, oh eight zero one two oh five zero eight two two, job number nineteen five oh one.
Second.
Second.
As been properly moved and seconded that number nineteen be passed, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, have the same right? Motion passed.
Mister Mayor?
Councilman Randle?
I move that we, we, um, discuss the work, uh, a presentation by Nick Houston at the, at the next city council meeting, and discuss the entire USDA Economic Development Grant.
Second.
Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded that we have Mister Nick Houston, our project manager, uh, be requested to be at the next meeting, so he can discuss the, um. USDA Economic Development Administration Grant in this entire city council. Heard the motion, ready for the question? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Um, would you make sure, did you, uh, send me a note on that one, to make sure we request Mister Houston, um, like, maybe tomorrow, the next day, there's plenty of notice? Thank you, man. Uh, item twenty, uh, discuss putting out an R P for building inspector, Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, yes, I work with, uh, Mister Colly Kilpatrick and the building inspector from Walla, as far as giving some insight on what it is exactly that they do, and exactly what, uh, we would do as far as a, a building inspector in, in our city. And both of them gave me some information, um, but Mister Colly Kilpatrick is the one that sent me what you have in your packet. And it, he says it includes everything, we can take out, um, what we don't need, um, but he al, he used one, um, from Minnesota. Um, because it was detailed as far as, uh, what you need in for as a building inspector, he said the only thing it didn't have that he had to add was international codes. And, um, he also made sure that the building inspector was the only one that could, uh, sign and give permits.
I move.
So anybody, I mean, y'all can look at it, take out, add to whatever you want to do. So I just gave it to you, so you can pass, so we can, so, um, look at, and if we can put it on, um.
The next agenda?
The next agenda.
Mister Mayor?
Okay.
Councilman Randle?
I have a question, currently right now, uh, as far as building inspection, that task is being performed by Bureau Veritas? When is that contract, I know we only had like a thirty or sixty day, do we need to renew that contract currently? Or who's our current building, uh, official? Or inspector, excuse me?
Building inspections are still being done by Bureau Veritas, that's not what, um, I think, that's not what you're referring to. The, um, in-house helping with some things, that was a, uh, something that ran out, and I think this is what, uh, Councilwoman Williams has shared with me, we're looking to do, and to replace that M R I.
But that's what. Yes, so, so this says building inspector, we have a building official, right now Bureau Veritas acting in our building official capacity, getting paid extra money monthly. That contract that was an attachment is also ending, so this is a good thing that we're starting, it's, but the question I asked is, when does that contract end?
I, I don't have that date on, on the map, I can't land.
And, and councilman, is this, councilman, Councilwoman Williams, is this building inspector to replace the building official?
Uh, yes, it's the one we, I think we talked about it some months ago, that Kendrick and I were working on, when we first said that we needed one that fully ever signed along with.
And with this building inspector, this will be, this will be something that we can designate as zoning officer?
Yes, yes, it talks about the zoning in here, like I said, um, Mister Kilpatrick said the only thing we would need to add is international codes, and then make sure that in the bullets, we put that this person will be the only person that can give permits.
Uh, I move that item, uh, twenty, state discuss and take action, putting out, uh, R P for building inspector next meeting.
Uh, second.
As been properly moved and seconded that putting out a R P for building inspector be carried over to the next meeting, you've heard the motion, ready for the question? Councilman Randle?
Mister Mayor, can you give, can you, uh, also let us know where we at, what our contract with Bureau Veritas for that same capacity?
Sure.
If we need to renew that for sixty days or however many, call for a question?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Discuss and take action on the master calendar and the city website, Councilwoman Wallace?
Okay. Oh yeah, so, um, I know that me and Councilman Roland, we've been working, we were working on the tap fees. Um, and so one idea that we talked about is that some of the more vital information needs to be on, be able to be access set, accessible on the website, um, instead of digging through the ordinances. Uh, so I'm working with Judge Alexander Simmons to see, uh, what some of that vital information may be. Um, so if any of y'all have anything that you feel like is necessary, uh, please let me know, I'll, I'll be meeting up with Judge Alexander Simmons, so, uh, you don't, I'm gonna need to be put on the next, uh, agenda, once I get that information, I'll put on the agenda then.
Thank you, sir. Item twenty-two, discuss and take action on the reforms in infrastructure spending, Councilwoman Wallace?
Yeah, so, and J J, please, or Mister J J, please correct me if I'm wrong with any of these statements, so, the reason why I put this on the agenda, um, is so last year, when it came to our infrastructure spending, we had, let me see. We had a hundred and fifteen thousand approximately in our twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget for infrastructure, uh, but only about thirteen thousand of it was spent, uh, for infrastructure, um.
I'm sorry, can you give us those numbers again?
Yeah, we had a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in our budget last year for infrastructure, oh, that's a street drainage budget line item, uh, but we only used thirteen thousand dollars of it. Uh, the breakdown of it is, we used twelve, twelve hundred fifty for a Jones project with M L K there, uh, sixty-six hundred was for trees, about eighteen hundred was for signs, and about a thousand dollars was for asphalt. So having that said, I think as city, city leadership, we have to do our due diligence, because we have a lot of infrastructure issues within the city. Um, and so with that being said, I feel like we need to prioritize, now, because we didn't use all of it, that some of that money is still left in the budget. Now, because we didn't use all of it, that some of that money is still left in the budget. And then we had this year, our infrastructure budget, I want to say, is one hundred and fifty thousand, about approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, so you put that together, that's over about two, that's about, oh, a little bit over two hundred and thirty thousand, um, from the leftovers. So I think what we need to do, even though I know we have, we should take part of that budget, um, and use it for plans in the future, but take some of that budget now, and create a community forum. So just as Councilman, uh, Wendy Williams, having gone into the different sections and having town hall meetings, uh, we should go to each section of the cities and ask, what's some of your biggest infrastructure issues? Because I know Rosewood, you know, that big, they have a big thing of drainage, but we spent zero dollars on drainage last year, right? So we want to go into these different communities, ask them what do they need, is it a speed bump, is it street lights? You know, and then after we get all the analysis, we can break down, prioritize, and use a portion of that money. So with two hundred and thirty thousand, I will feel like depending on how we plan for the future, like taking like a hundred grand of that, or the money that we were supposed to use last year, and using that for the community to kind of help make that decision for. So I'll come back in the next meeting, uh, break down the different, uh, divisions, put dates on it, so that we can start, uh, putting action on, moving action to has community forums, so that people or the citizens will know exactly uh, when to come out and when, uh, they're able to have a voice heard. And I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a list of different infrastructure items as well. So I'm gonna ask, this is just for informational purposes, I'm gonna ask to put this on the next agenda, so I, I move to put this on the next agenda, so that, uh, so that I can actually have the paperwork in front of y'all to look at.
Just a second. It's been properly moved and seconded that item number twenty-two, discuss and take action on community forums, infrastructure spending be carried over to the next meeting under next agenda. Heard the motion, unreadiness, Councilwoman.
Uh, and also, Mr. Jiddick, if you get us, if you can get us the specific number for what we have in that outline item, uh, that will help us as well. If you have it now, you can give it to us, if not, we can.
Hundred and fifty-eight nine.
How much?
One fifty-eight nine.
So it's not two something, one fifty-eight?
Well, no, it, what's in the budget is a hundred and fifty-eight nine, but what he referenced was the balance that was in the account that wasn't used in nineteen. You still can use that money in addition to this new money. We would have to do an, a budget amendment, uh, to use that, that, a reserve money.
Okay, so, so you're telling me what wasn't used last year?
Right.
Wasn't carried over, it was put somewhere else?
Well, no, what happens is, you have a separate bank account for street maintenance.
Right.
For your street maintenance sales tax. We roughly had a hundred and seventeen thousand still in that bank account at the end of the year. We've budgeted new money of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand that you're gonna receive in this new fiscal period.
Okay, so that's not in the account, that's money that's projected to come, that's different?
Right.
Okay, you, you said follow, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we had this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We had this discussion for a conversation. Makes me, it's a coffee question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item twenty-two, discuss and take action on finance committee, Councilwoman Wallace.